For 24th Common Council Meeting, Clerk can you please take the roll?
Paschal.
Here.
Miller.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Presentant six.
Will now be led by a common council member Paschal for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance with our Oshkosh North High School students.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be the ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual of the redeemed and justice for all.
So we have some certificates for you. Thank you to Zulema Felnet, Zulema Felnet, and Owen Schultz from Oshkosh North High School. Here's a certificate of appreciation for you. Thank you for leading us in the pledge. There you go. You can either join us for the rest of the meeting or go ahead and go home. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for Take Back the Night, and Alicia from Reach Counseling, Christine Anne, I'm sorry, Center will be joining us for that. Take Back the Night Day 2019, whereas sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence impacts all residents of the city of Oshkosh in the state of Wisconsin, whereas 47 Wisconsin residents lost their lives to domestic and interpersonal violence in 2018, including one resident of Winnebago County. Whereas sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence remain a vastly under-reported crime, whereas each resident in the city of Oshkosh plays a crucial role in ending and preventing sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence, whereas the 29th Annual Take Back the Night Event will be co-hosted on October 2, 2019, by Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Services, Reach Counseling, and UW Oshkosh. Whereas residents from the city of Oshkosh and surrounding areas are invited to gather to honor victims and survivors of sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence, and identify ways each person can be part of the solution to prevent sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence from happening in our community. Now therefore, I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence a community issue, and declare October 2, 2019, as Take Back the Night Day in the city of Oshkosh, and urge all residents to join Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Services, Reach Counseling, and UW Oshkosh in gathering to end sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence in our community on October 2, 2019, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Beckett's Restaurants. And Alicia may want to share some details on that event?
Sure. Yes, so the event is taking place on Wednesday, October 2, at Beckett's in Oshkosh here in the ballroom. It is a change of venue this year, so we're hoping to bring more community members to the event and take a stand against domestic and sexual violence.
Thank you so much. Next is our first opportunity for citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes and must address items that are not listed on the council's meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Clerk, do we have someone registered?
Yes, we have several. Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood Drive.
I'm here to talk about a new nonprofit group in Oshkosh and Appleton called Breathe Free. So I have a few slides to show. Will they automatically come up on the screen or? There we go.
You should have an opportunity to advance the slides. Is that correct? I believe.
You should have to do it. Yes. Okay. Breathe Free, the name comes from the poem that's with the Statue of Liberty. Give us your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, and then towards the end it says, "to breathe free" in our country. So our goal with our group is to help people with education, community resources, and the immigrant voice. For instance, we work with World Relief. I'm on the board of this, and there is a member on the board from World Relief as well. Our mission is, as a nonprofit, is to empower people with diverse cultural backgrounds living in Wisconsin to live their best life, to be citizens in our community. This chart is from 2016. It's the latest data we have to kind of show in Oshkosh residents who are foreign-born, people that are born in other countries, and by age group. So for instance, from, you can see that we have quite a population, particularly in the younger age group of children in our school district. Non-English speakers in Oshkosh, the number-one language is Spanish, then Hmong, German, and Chinese, but we know that there's up, I believe, 50 languages spoken in this school district. So it might just be a few people of a particular language. But anyway, there's greater diversity in Oshkosh than certainly I thought before I moved here several years ago. So recent arrivals, we get people that are new to the United States that are located in Oshkosh, but we're also seeing people that were brought to the U.S. and lived in, say, Chicago, or Nebraska, or somewhere else in the country, and their secondary home is in Oshkosh. And we know our school system has regard to help children, students in the school system, but, so our part is to help their parents in however we can to help them navigate what it is like to live in the United States. You can see people are coming from Burma, Democratic Republic of Congo, Somalia, Syria, Iraq, and in 2016, there were 1,691 people. That's the latest statistic I have on here. There's three parts to our mission that we feel for Breathe Free, is to collaborate with other community organizations. We have some great organizations in Oshkosh and in the Appleton area, but we need to know which ones are willing to work with people that are non-English speakers, and in what way we can connect people to understand what those resources are and how they may help them. So, and provide learning opportunities for the adults. We know, again, Fox Valley Tech has training for people when English is their second language, but sometimes they need different hours, or they need some additional help, and so people on our board and in our group will help adults. We help, maybe they need legal guidance, like a particular place to go to get help. They may want to understand about mental, social, and physical needs. Transportation training, we help some people get their driver's license. They need that extra practice, and we can be that person to help them get their legal license. With housing, can be confusing to people, particularly the different sizes of family and where might be on the bus line for people for transportation. The E S L instruction, I already said, or resume and application filling out. People want to work, but it can be confusing what to do online, and where to go, and how to best complete that kind of work. Again, we already have places that can help, but we want to be that go-between to help individual families, individual people get that help. We host events and publish them online with, to explain what we're doing, and ask for more volunteers to help us in different ways. Like the Strength and Beauty of Immigrants in Northeast Wisconsin, I already mentioned about drivers, helping people get their driver's license. We're looking to raise funds to even help people go to driver's training, because that's kind of expensive, and they may not have the money in their budget to do it. Building Kids, we will help with the different, with World Relief to help at events. So again, we're, Breathe Free, we're here to help residents in Oshkosh that are from immigrant background to get them incorporated into how things work in our city. Just wanted to let you know about that, and certainly you're welcome to ask me at any time if you'd like more information. You each have a pamphlet, which has our website and even our email address. Thank you so much. Thanks for what you're doing.
I just had one question. Are you on the 211 information database?
We are not on 211. Thank you very much for that, though.
Oh, I was just curious.
I have talked to them, because they are supportive of people that have needs, they can call 211, but we need an English speaker, and then they would get us somebody of another language. But thank you for that idea.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Again, thank you.
Thanks.
Fred Mastin, 124 West Peckham Street, Neenah.
Hello. How are you guys doing today?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I don't know if you guys remember me from last time. Correct? I had a petition for funding for recycling cans, in particular in downtown Oshkosh. I'm back here again to ask for some funding for the same thing, of course, the, some recycling receptacles, along with, like, some, maybe some new signs. I think that's definitely needed in the town, particularly, I'm talking downtown. I think that's a great place to start. I have a lot of different kind of points I wanted to make about, like, the education. We need to educate the community first. The problem really isn't the recycling cans, it's the fact that they're littering, right? So if we could educate the youth communities, anyone that's willing to listen, that'd be wonderful, and I'd be willing to help with all this as well. And the businesses, that's a big one. They like to say, "Well, outside of my storefront, that's the city's problem, that's not mine." You know, because I've actually, you know, I'm down in the trenches, guys, so just want you to know that. So, and then, I think the biggest one for me would be like the designs and like the concepts of different recycling cans. Now, one of the biggest problems that I've been seeing is that, like, not only the location of, or the lack of recycling receptacles, but also, like, where they are, where they are and what they look like, right? They need to look not like a trash can, because, you know, that way people might get confused, right? Or they just, or they're not thinking, I don't know, I can't really, I can only assume. But what I've seen is that the downtown Oshkosh particularly, the recycling cans, I believe there's only three of them, we don't even know that they're recycling cans. I've went around asking people, "Hey, do you know where the nearest recycling can is?" They can't tell me. I'm like, "That's fine." A lot of people don't even know the materials that need to be recycled, right? So again, that's just another issue with, you know, educating the public and our community, and I'm here to help. So if you guys want to get on board that, I'd really appreciate it, because I can't afford it.
Mr. Mastin, is it the last name?
Yes, correct.
Did you say you live in Neenah?
Current, well, yeah, I mean, I'm.
Is that something you're working on, like, in the region, or just Oshkosh, or Neenah and Oshkosh?
No, yeah, like, I'm actually, like, everywhere, all over.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing.
No further individuals are registered.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Do you have anyone registered for consent agenda?
No one is registered.
All right. Take a motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fitzpatrick, maybe you could just give us a, we're approving a health insurance agreement with Robyn's Health. I believe that's a new company that we're working with, that's Resolution 19-520. Want to just give us some highlights of why we're switching companies, and what are the benefits for employees?
Right, I'd be happy to. As council knows, periodically, we take a look at our programming. We have taken a look at our health insurance program for the past, well, I would say about five years, and so we're trying to be as economical as we can without sacrificing the quality of the program for our employees. We also have a health insurance committee that participates as part of this process, and so we did that this year. We took a look at the different vendors that might be available that were interested in us. We were very pleasantly surprised that, you know, we had a lot of companies that wanted to work with us. I think one of the reasons is because we have such a low loss ratio. Just for folks who may not know, you know, a number of one is a good number. You know, our loss ratio is below .8. So, and I think that's really a credit to the employees, they've worked very hard on wellness, but also to the council. I don't think there's any doubt in my mind that the fact that the council saw fit to fund our employee clinic back in 2015 has really helped move forward, and that was unusual, because I think at that time, only about 10% of the public employers in the state of Wisconsin had clinics. So I think that was a good decision, and I think you're seeing that play itself out right now. I didn't include in my memo, but I do, Michelle worked up some information that I have, you know, since 2015 in the introduction of the clinic. In terms of our health insurance costs for renewal, in 2015, we had a reduction of about 16%. In 2017, it was approximately 2%. In 2018, another 4.6%. In 2019, it was flat, and then in 2020, it's projected to be another 7.2%. And just to put that in the proper context, the industry average is about an 8% increase every year. So we're very grateful. The council saw fit to do that, and we're fortunate that, you know, other vendors are interested in doing business with us. So this company is, has essentially the same sort of providers that we have right now, so I don't think it'll be a significant disruption for our employees, and the committee was very pleased to see this, too. So we're happy to see this information, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Any other council discussion on consent agenda items? Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, while you're there, I'll go with you first, 19-520 still. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Herman, for bringing that up. You know, one thing you talked about was the loss rate, or basically the expenses that the plan incurs.
Right.
And you're right, previous council did invest in their employees and invest in this community, and I applaud that effort, and am very supportive of it with the budget coming up. But I think a good, a big thank you goes out to the employees of the city of Oshkosh. They're the ones that keep those expenses low, they're using healthcare appropriately, and they're using their clinic appropriately to make sure that those expenses are staying in line, which means, you know, lower premiums and just a better bottom line, and so thank you to them for using it effectively.
Absolutely, I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, we're very fortunate, we, our employees really take that seriously. They have been utilizing the health coach at the clinic and our health insurance committee. The folks on that group do a good job, too, so you're right, we are grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. And then, I just had one more for Mr. Davis on 19-519. I actually sent him a couple of questions earlier, I think he's probably got some answers for him, but I just had a couple of questions on the spotlight designation, authorized redevelopment, authority to accept donation of 1124 High Ave. This is a property that had a fire. Owner wants to gift or turn over the property to the city. I had a couple of questions, because currently this property is, and this may, this affects this property, but these are questions that also affect other properties that we acquire through spotlight. This particular property has some special assessments out there that they've been paying on, they had a payment plan, I think, on it. So in these types of cases, when we receive a gift of property, you know, what happens with those special assessments, and are we made whole on those?
Yes, we are. It's about $2,000, and the arrangement we have with the current owner is that they would pay that upon closing.
Cool, good. And then, I think we've kind of talked about it at times, strategic planning, as well as just in general, you know, the strategic or the coherent plan that we have for acquiring these blighted properties, you know, in this case, is there, is there a market? Is there, are there people that are going to be willing to buy this type of property, this shaped or this sized property in that type of location? You know, generally, we've got some other areas, Jefferson Street, that we've tried to continuously acquire and put some plans out there with not a whole lot of, you know, results in terms of new growth, but what are the prospects for this type of a site?
Typically, we go through the whole process where we demolish and site prep the property, and then we list it on our website and all the free websites that are out there. In this particular case, staff has already been approached by potential buyers interested in building a single-family home on the property. So it's a lot of record, you can legally bill on that property.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So seeing no other discussion for the consent agenda, Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Paschal.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have new ordinances. There will be no formal action anticipated on either of these items. The first one is ordinance 19-534, designate the intersection of Wisconsin Street and Linwood Avenue as a four-way stop intersection, and the intersection of Wisconsin Street and Viola Avenue as a two-way stop intersection. Viola stops for Wisconsin. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
Perhaps, is Mr. Collins available, or Mr. Davis? Would you like to just kind of give a little reasoning behind why we're doing this?
I'd be happy to do it, Madam Mayor. Mr. Collins isn't available this evening. This actually came as a result of observations with the Quick Trip on Jackson, and Linwood is actually generating more traffic, and we believe that moving the intersect, the four-way, or the, excuse me, the four-way stop to Wisconsin and Linwood makes more sense than having it in Viola. So we'll still have stop signs on Viola going east-west, but the north-south stop sign at Wisconsin and Viola would be removed under this scenario. And the Traffic Review Board looked at that and felt that was an appropriate move, given how the dynamics of traffic in the area have changed.
Councilmember Paschal.
Sure, if I could add to Mr. Roloff's statements as the council rap on the Traffic and Parking Review Board. This issue was actually came, we were, we looked at this issue for a month. So it initially came to us to just discuss Linwood and the intersection at Linwood and Wisconsin, but then we started to question, why was there a stop sign at Viola in Wisconsin? And so we sent it back so that transportation could communicate to the neighbors that we were thinking about changing those intersections completely. And so, so at the first meeting, where it took place, we had one resident from the neighborhood who initiated the conversation, who came and provided his insight. For the second meeting, we did have Transportation Department notice the neighborhood around Viola and Wisconsin, and we had no residents that came and presented any concerns at that meeting. But that, this suggests, this change was unanimous of the Traffic Review Board, so.
Thanks for that update. Anyone else have anything to share on that? All right, then, no action. We'll move on to new ordinance 19-535, approved temporary closure of Wagu Avenue and Otter Avenue at the Canadian National Railroad crossings. Mr. Roloff or Mr. Davis, did you want to elaborate on that one?
This would be for Mr. Robbie.
Mr. Robbie? Come on down.
The Canadian National Railroad approached us and asked us to bring this forward so they can do some work on the tracks at these two crossings. Each crossing, they're requesting up to two weeks' closure, starting mid to late October and continuing through early November.
It's nice to see that they're investing in safer crossings.
So two weeks, did you say?
Each intersection, they've requested up to two weeks' closure. I believe their work will only take about a week, but given weather conditions at that time of year, they're asking for up to two weeks on each one, and they do overlap one week, the second week of the first one will be the first week of the second one, so there is an overlap there, but they're asking for a maximum of two weeks at each intersection.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to pending resolution 19-536, support legislative action at the state and federal level to address incidents of mass violence and gun safety legislation. And I just want to express my appreciation to council for laying that over until this meeting. And do we have anyone to speak on that, registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Okay, back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
So I do see that Chief Smith is here, and I'd just like to read this resolution. It is a short one. It is, I initiated this as a result of some participation with multiple groups, and it basically says, whereas gun deaths, including at least 250 incidents of mass violence since January 1, 2019, have become an epidemic in the United States, and whereas Oshkosh is home to over 66,000 persons, three large high schools, as well as middle and elementary schools, and host numerous large public events, and whereas Oshkosh has experienced incidents of gun violence and credible threats of violence to the public and schools, and whereas citizens and students have called for reasonable regulations to address gun violence and to increase public safety, and whereas citizens, municipalities, and local first responders need assistance and additional resources to deal with this public health crisis, and whereas groups, including the League of Women Voters, U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities have joined in efforts to urge legislators to recognize the need to act with regard to these issues, and whereas there is bipartisan support for sensible measures related to gun safety, virtually all gun safety regulation is within the purview of the state and federal government. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Oshkosh, that the city of Oshkosh adds its support to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, League of Women Voters, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Oshkosh citizens and students, and joins them in their call for reasonable gun safety legislation. Be it further resolved that the common council calls on its local legislators at the state and federal levels to sponsor and support sensible gun safety legislation, including universal background checks, red flag laws, risk protection orders, reasonable waiting periods, uniform reasonable waiting periods, uniform concealed carry regulations, and increased funding for awareness and treatment of mental health. Be it further resolved that the appropriate city staff are hereby directed to provide a copy of this resolution to state and federal representatives serving the city of Oshkosh. Thank you for your patience. Chief Smith, would you come forth and just elaborate a little bit on what we shared regarding this resolution? And city attorney may want to add in some discussion at one point here too?
Well, I think the resolution covers areas that are, that are important to certainly our community and the law enforcement population as a whole. One of our biggest concerns we have in, in many communities in the state of Wisconsin are, are mental health issues. And being able to address mental health issues in a comprehensive way that prevents citizens from going into crisis is what we want in law enforcement. We are not the, we are not the solution for folks in mental health crisis. So, a resolution supporting assistance in that aspect is, is very important to us. And certainly reasonable gun safety is important in law enforcement as a whole and the community.
Thank you. Any council members?
Did you have any questions on it? It was drafted basically looking at the information from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the...
U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Thank you. U.S. Conference of Mayors.
And the League of Women Voters.
And the League of Women Voters. And recognizing that the city of Oshkosh has, has limited authority in this area, but to encourage action by the state and federal legislation that does have more of the ability to react.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that, that this got brought forward, that you put this together, that staff worked on this. Couple of weeks ago, when we had the initial discussion on this, I had just cautioned and made a statement about being too political and making, and picking sides and making this a Democrat versus Republicans talking point. And, and that doesn't belong at the, at the local level. So, there's some, there's a little bit in this particular resolution that I have a concern with, that we should not be advocating for or against at the local level. And so, I'll be moving to amend 19536 to remove the following. This would be on page two, paragraph two, to remove sensible gun safety legislation, including universal background checks, red flag laws, risk protection orders, reasonable waiting periods, uniform concealed carry regulations, and to remove that part of the resolution. Fully supportive of us calling on our state and federal legislators to put forth reasonable gun safety legislation, as it notes, as well as fully supportive of our federal and state partners increasing funding for awareness and treatment of mental health. But I don't think the other talking points that are included in this should be something that the local level should be advocating for or against. That is, that is a political thing and this is a nonpartisan, or excuse me, a nonpartisan body. And that's advocating too much Democratic talking points for me.
Councilmember Crowsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to respectfully...
Does that, does that was a motion?
I have a motion on the floor.
My apologies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Uh, Councilmember Crowsey now.
Can we at least discuss the whole thing before we order, talk about an amendment to the resolution? Because we're basically taking the whole thing away.
Right now, the amendment's on the floor, so the discussion should be focused on the amendment.
So, I can have a discussion on that?
On the amendment.
On the amendment?
Right.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with Mr. Muggerauer. The whole idea of this is to make the community safer and it's not a political issue. Seventy percent of the country supports stricter background checks, gun show loophole changes, red flag laws. I mean, I think we're just trying to make it a safer community. Chief Smith, I think with these, could you answer a question for me? I think with these proposals and we're just giving a suggestion to the state and the federal of what we think would be, make the communities and schools safer, which is obviously more important than a stricter background check and a hassle for somebody to buy a gun. And if they want to wait and if they have to wait an extra couple of days, it's not that big of a deal. If we can make the kids' lives safer, in your opinion, professional opinion, the stricter background checks, gun show loopholes, and the red flag laws, would that make our community safer, which is your primary objective as the chief of police?
That's a, that's a lot to say it's going to make the community safer. It's a lot to put into that. But I do think that responsible legislation at the state level is, is important as it relates to gun safety and as it relates to allowing us to respond to those persons who are in mental health crisis. And that's, that's, that's our biggest concern in law enforcement is when an officer is dealing with somebody who has mental health issues and they're in crisis. Because those are two different scenarios that we should be able to do what we need to do to help both them and their families.
If the access to firearms were more strict to people with mental health issues, would the crime rate go down or would the potential for more deaths? Because last year was the first year that there was more gun deaths in the United States than car accidents, than car deaths.
And I don't have that data to speak to that. Again, it's a broad statement to say that there, there will be less crime if we have this particular legislation. I would tell you it would make our job easier in law enforcement, having less guns on the street.
Okay. Because yeah, in my opinion, I mean, there's mental health problems all over the world, but our country has the most access to firearms, which other countries don't, and their crime rates and gun deaths are a lot lower. I mean, that's a proven fact. So, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Pascal?
Sure. Well, Councilmember Muggerauer, it was, it was good to hear you back a little bit from your, from your current statements. I can understand how you feel in regards to what you're, what you're asking here. So, I think it's important that, that this conversation about it being political and it being partisan. And I, and I want to provide my, my, my view on that because I don't, I'm not looking at this from a partisan perspective. I'm, I'm not a member of a political party. To be honest with you, I haven't been a member of a political party for about 12 years. And, and I'll be very honest, I was a member of the Green Party and used to chair that party for the state of Wisconsin. So, but as this goes right now, my agenda, my feelings on this has no relation to party lines. It has relations to what I feel our legislators, whether they're Republicans or Democrats, should be looking at as I represent the city of Oshkosh. And I think that's really important to look at that because this is not a partisan issue to me. This is a safety issue to me. And I, and I believe that when there is a safety issue that is bordering on, on epidemic in regards to health issue-related levels, I think it's important that we look at all tools in the toolbox to take steps to making our communities as safe as they can. So, so I, I want to reiterate, I'm not trying to play any political games here with this. I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I'm not really any party member at this point. And the only thing that's important to me is the safety of our community members. And I believe that steps in this direction, our legislators looking at these areas and taking stance and directions in these areas is a strong step forward. And I would encourage everyone up here to look at it from being a nonpartisan perspective and looking at it from a community safety perspective across the board. So, thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with everything that has been said on the dais regarding the issue. I think, I think when it comes to gun safety and obviously the safety of our community, as well as of the children that are in the schools, is of utmost importance. With that being said, you know, I think when there is very specific language, which, whether how we view it or how the community or others view from being, whether it's partisan or nonpartisan, I'm more comfortable with a language that says that we are all about responsible gun laws. And of course, mental health is a huge, huge thing that I think everybody can, can grasp on. And to the chief's point, certainly, you know, when it comes to mental health, it makes their job easier if there is legislation, legislative things, language in place. And then, of course, you know, to have the state actually designate perhaps additional funds to address that issue, being that we know that is critical sometimes in, in some of the actions, unfortunately, that have come about from, from guns. So, I would, I agree with Mr. Muggerauer in the language that he's presenting. And I would like to leave it to our elected officials who are at the state level, who I am confident will do a good job in making sure that there's legislation in place.
Thank you, Mayor. I can see both sides also. I don't think that the words that are in this sentence that we're focusing on is really too big of an issue. These are all issues that are out there that are being talked about. You know, the bottom line is the person that commits these types of crimes, in most cases, is not buying his gun at a legal gun store because he's, can't get a gun that way. So, no matter what legislation we would support or not support, or even in a resolution like this, we're supporting that we need to address the issue. And the issue is gun violence and mental health issues to go along with that. Because the ulterior, when guns are outlawed, also have guns because they don't buy in the traditional way that we do. And that, no matter what laws we pass, they're going to affect probably the average hunter, the average person that buys a gun to shoot for recreational purposes and things like that. So, I'll support this. I, I don't see it having any, any negative impact to what we do here in the state of Oshkosh, other than supporting, that we support legislation that will end gun violence, hopefully, in mass casualties, and address the bigger issues that surround this issue in general. So, thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. What I would like to say is that it's very clear to me that, you know, regardless of individual opinions or votes on this, that, you know, it's, I'm confident that all of my colleagues have a good heart and, and obviously, when it comes to gun violence, I don't think anybody disagrees. And I don't think Mr. Muggerauer is saying that at all. I do want to compliment Mayor Lori Palmieri because bringing this resolution forward, first of all, is bold. And so, I would like to say, I appreciate that, as well as it sounds like the collaboration with some groups to maybe perhaps come up with the language for this, as well as the staff. So, kudos, kudos to you for putting, putting this out there and putting yourself out there for it.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, point out one other thing here. Before we take a vote on whether or not to amend this, you know, there is bipartisan support for sensible measures. And these items were very thoughtfully crafted in line with what was thought to be the very basic common sense measures. I would ask Chief Smith if you could just, before we take this to a vote, elaborate a little bit more on the red flag laws and those extreme risk protection orders and how that would be impactful to Oshkosh.
Well, I think it's important to, when you have the discussion on red flag laws, to understand that these, as I understand it, as they're being crafted, they will not take away due process from folks. And that's really the important issue for us. Due process is one of the driving forces for what we do in law enforcement. Essentially, as, as, as it's been presented to me with red flag laws, if a police officer goes to a, a home where somebody is having mental health issues, they're in crisis. Remember, there's two parts to that. And there's guns in the house. We, we want to be able to remove those guns from that equation. Not, not permanently, but allow them the opportunity to have a due process hearing later on when there's no more, no more crisis. And allow them to get their guns back when whatever issues they are having are resolved. I think it protects the officers. I think it protects the families. And it protects the individual that's in crisis as well. That's, that's really, as far as red flag laws, as I understand it, the, the best solution that we could possibly come up with. We want to keep the community safe in that moment. We deal with people in crisis. We deal with them when they're at their worst. And it's, it's difficult by itself, but when you involve firearms into those equations, it becomes even more difficult for us.
Thank you for sharing more detail there. And I guess the, the one thing I would add is, in attending a mayor's conference recently, Mayor Hanna shared some details of a first responder who lost their life recently to gun violence. And one of the things that really struck me, while there have been other mass violence events of late, it just really struck me that we were 15 minutes away from being that community because the bus that the individual was on went through Oshkosh 15 minutes prior to that. And so, it is very sad for Appleton and their loss, but it, it kind of pushed me to be a little bit bold here. And, and I appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness on the issue. And that's, I guess, we're calling the question and ready to vote on the amendment removing the language from gun safety legislation, comma, to semicolon, and increased funding in the second to last paragraph. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pascal?
No.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
No.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Lost two-four.
So, we will now take this back for motion and the second. We already had that on the floor for a discussion on the resolution as written. Do we have any council members who'd like to discuss it further? Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Pascal?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Present.
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Present.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four to present.
Thank you. Next is resolution 19-537 approve tax increment district number 38 project plan designate tax increment district number 38 boundaries, create tax increment district number 38 Pioneer redevelopment plan commission recommends approval. And I will just add that plan commission recommended approval based on having determined consistency with our conference of plan. Do we have anyone registered for 19537?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support this new tax increment district number 38. I think it's long overdue that we start to get some development, something going in the Pioneer area. I think it's an exciting opportunity to bring some different fun activities, maybe, to Oshkosh that we haven't had. We always kind of get accused of being behind the times. And so, this is an opportunity that all goes to the developer's direction that he'll be able to make it work. And I think it's exciting. And I've heard from several citizens in the community that, that when they saw the article that the Herald did and that, that we're, we're pleased to see this. And they've also commented already on how the Marina, looks like more boats are at the Marina than in the past few years. few years, and I think that this will be good for Oshkosh. And I think all the due diligence has been done, and it's a PEGO TIF, as our policies are now, and I think, even though we've had some issues in the last couple of months on a few of our other TIFs, this still protects the citizens of Oshkosh. So, I'll support it.
Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second what, what Councilmember Herman just said. In addition to that, you know, this is one of those projects, this is one of those areas that, for the last decade-plus, you know, it's been on everybody's radar, whether you're in City Hall, probably sitting up here for the last decade-plus, or just at the general citizens at home, you know, what's going on at the Pioneer? That's always, that's always the question. It's finally a good thing to be able to say something's going on there, and something positive's going on there. You know, it used to be a staple, it used to be a destination point, an attractive spot along the river and along the lake, and it hasn't been for a while, and it looks like through Mr. Dumkey's efforts, we're hopeful to have something very desirable on that point, and very attractive to, to pull in some additional investment as well. I wish you get, you and the full development, all the luck and all the best in it. I'm hopeful for, as you are, I think, additional improvements to the plan and scaling it up as, as possible with further development. So, I'll be completely supportive of it, and I'm thankful to see something going on there in a, in a positive way.
Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. I have a couple pragmatic questions before I provide my praise, so. So, how much, so there's a statement in it that talks about how, how much a TIF needs to be blighted. What is that, like 50% of it has to be, less than 50%?
Fifty, 51% is the magic number, yes.
I'm just trying to, I had the, I had it right here. So, my, my question is, is, well, more maybe, it's a little bit more of a statement. This, this I perceive, and if you were to ask a lot of the community, is probably one of the most developable lands available in Oshkosh in decades. So, and, and I think it's, I think it's hard to see this land, again, as being considered blighted land, because it is such a developable piece of land, it's placed in a premier spot, and, and I, and I'm just wondering, how do we really get, and I get, I get the fact that it lay dormant, and that the structures, you know, went, went, went to put, because there was no effort put into it anymore. But I just wonder, I just wonder, do we have to call this site blighted in order to be able to provide this, these, this benefit, this, this TIF district?
The answer is yes. You can only create a TIF under certain conditions, blight's one of them, industrial purposes and mixed use are generally the categories you can use for blight, I'm sorry, for creating TIF districts. Blight was identified on this site based on environmental conditions, the condition of the structures, and the condition of the fill material on the property. So, that was established, you might not be able to see everything when it comes to the environmental, or the fill, or the restrictions on the property. You certainly could see the blight in the buildings that were, the structures that are on the property.
So, so what you're saying is that the years of disrepair that, that led to the property being in the condition that it is, is what's, is why it's considered blighted?
It's one of the factors. I mean, there's a half-page worth of blighting factors in state statute, and I believe, I just ticked off the ones that I, I thought were pretty visible to most people. When you look at that island and the Marina, there's dredging that has to be done, there's environmental testing and remediation that'll have to be done, there'll be pilings that'll have to be put on the, on the island to support any kind of structures. The existing structures are, from the bridges to the parking lot, to the, the buildings that are still there, even the seawall, those are all dilapidated and need to be replaced. So, just about everything that you could see, I think, is pretty, meets the blighted definitions of state statute, and a lot of things you can't see also meet the statute definitions.
So, even though we might view, or even the community might view this as a highly developable area, because of the condition and the things that we don't necessarily see every day, those things can be improved, because they're in a state that, that are not, not, not feasibly to be used in a development? Like...
I think my answer is yes, based on how you described it. I'm not sure if Mr. Taves would want to throw anything on. When it comes to blight, this is, I guess...
Just, just coming, where I'm coming from is that every time we have a project in our community, we offer a TIF. And I, and I get that we have a limited amount of tools, and I'm not actually denouncing the tool, to be honest with you, I'm not denouncing the project. I just, I just love there to be another tool for us to use that looks at our, looks at what we offer and says, this is a prime, prime piece of real estate, it's a beautiful piece of land, we want someone to build on it, we want to happily give out something. But I don't, for, for once, I don't want to give, I mean, I want to, but I, I struggle with every single piece of land that we say is a, is a blighted piece, piece of land, and it's, and it's just not. You know, from the, from the developmental perspective, yes, it is, but from the reality that it's, it's a profitable piece of land, someone wants it, someone's obviously held onto it for 15 years, we're very lucky to have a local developer who wants to take it forward. But I'm just wondering, where do we get past calling our, our most prized land blight, and just calling it a developable piece of land, and, and having a tool where we happily say, hey, it's, needs a lot of work, but here's a prime piece of land, we want to help you with it? I just, just, I'm, I'm having a hard time grasping how we do this for years, so...
There's a legal definition of blight, and by many measures, I won't say every, but by many measures, it meets the legal definition of blight, and I think that's where the city attorney was about to chime in. But I think maybe your question was probably more along the lines, does its potential as a development site take away its classification as blight? And I think the answer is no. The fact that it, it does show potential says that there's, there's hope for it, because if the answer to that question is, there's no hope for it, then these gentlemen wouldn't be here tonight, because it would, it would essentially say failure. Our role in this is, we're taking it because it's a risky proposition, and the whole but-for clause exists to say, but for this TIF, this development wouldn't occur. And, and we've had discussions, even though we're not down to the final details, which will be worked out in the development agreement, they are going to need a great deal of, of assistance to make this economical, for them to make it even with the TIF. So, that, that's sort of the standard, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of sites with great potential, and I'm sure real estate people would be happy to say, oh, this is a, this is a real fixer-upper, it's got great potential, that's still, you know, that, there's still a lot of blight there underneath it, whether it's legal or a matter of opinion. But, hope is not necessarily the eliminate, rules, hope doesn't rule out blight. So, Mr. Taves, you've probably made dozens and thousands of presentations on this, I'm not sure where, where your take on this?
I think, I think you've hit it square on it, but the one thing I would add is, as Mr. Davis mentioned, there are only certain types of qualifications we can use to create a TID. One of the things we have to look at, too, is the amount of cost that may be necessary by creating a blighted area TID, or another alternative, in need of conservation or rehabilitation. That provides for a 27-year term versus a 20-year term, for example, on a mixed use. So, given the, you know, the, the high level of potential public infrastructure investment that may be needed in this area, as well as the fact that we expect incentives will be a part of the mix, this provides the city with the most flexibility in terms of that time horizon to recapture costs, so that, you know, is also one of the things when we look at the characteristics of the area, and we try to determine, you know, what's the best fit, we have to take that timeframe into consideration as well.
Sure.
Council, Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. Mr. Peschall, did you have, okay. So, I understand where, where Mr. Peschall is coming from. I think ideally, all of us would love to have where we had, you know, perfect land available, that we did not have to have TIFs or TIDs, that the project would be developed, and we would get the, you know, the tax dollars immediately. Unfortunately, in our community, there are just some areas that we just have to call the baby ugly, and unfortunately, this is one of them that has deteriorated to the point, in which it's definitely considered blighted. I think the challenge, probably for anybody that would develop on that property, is obviously, being that it didn't transfer, you know, from the old owner to a new owner, with the grandfathered setbacks in place, we now have a developer here that now has less area to work with, which makes it more difficult to get an ROI. You add into that the construction and labor costs that, you know, are now and moving forward, and typically, I think that's what we've, we've heard and found from developers that ask for TIFs and TIDs, and where staff supports it. So, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Peschall. I agree with you, and, and I, and I wish that was an option, but I don't think that that's an option here, is to not provide some type of tool in order to have some type of development occur.
Before you go on, Councilmember Peschall, so, I was just looking at our TIF policy and application. We did update our TIF policy a few years ago, and one of the things that council had clearly preferred in that criteria was that the payback period be a maximum of 20 years, and that preference would be given to projects with payback periods of 10 years or under. I understand that you can go longer with the blight category, but I, I guess I look at it as just because we can, doesn't mean we should. And what I'm struggling with here is, been truly conflicted over this particular tip, because it has been blighted, as Councilmember Allison Osby and others have said for so long, and we're so excited to see something happen, that we might maybe act on something that's not quite ripe. But I understand we have a lot of complexities and a lot of struggles, as desirable as the property might be. One of the things that I think is propelling me towards supporting this is that there are also public access points, that this will open up to the public, that while it's as it is, it's not safe for that public access. On the other hand, I'm really struggling with how the 50 million estimated generated increment over the next few years would come of this, and I understand it can't all be specifically spelled out here right at this moment, but if, if somebody could help with clearing that up a little more, perhaps it'd be helpful, Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'll, I'll take a crack at the, at part of that, in that the cities try to create as much flexibility for the council as possible, so that's why we're stretching it out to 27 years, because that gives the city the most time to make the improvements and make those improvements, and pay off those improvements. And as you suggested, we have quite an elaborate Riverwalk planned for the whole island and down to the Marina, and that's going to be in excess of $10 million, and that's going to, it's not going to be able to be paid off that quickly, especially if there's potentially some remediation or some cleanup that we need to provide to the developer, because just about everywhere in downtown Oshkosh is a fill site that has poor soils and contamination. So, just be prepared to find that whenever you dig in downtown Oshkosh. So, that dries up some of those costs, and we don't even know what all those costs are on this island at this point in time, let alone the Marina or the other connecting pieces. When it comes to the development agreement, that's something the developer would have to come back, and that's negotiated between council and the developer, and those are the specific dollar amounts that we can allocate based on the, the future development. Future development, we've tried to project this as high as we can right now, to give you the greatest flexibility, and the developer the greatest flexibility in acquiring the improvements and the, I guess, investments that we're trying to attract, and make sure we can pay off incentives and public infrastructure. The infrastructure also includes improved transportation and utilities to that, that, that location as well. So, there's tens of millions of dollars of improvements that would need to support the, the development of the Marina and the island.
And I guess, more specifically on that, on page 20 of the project plan in the Ellers section, there's like a $4 million Phase 1 and a $4 million Phase 2 for the public Riverwalk. There was some other reference in the document to the assumption that the city would take care of the seawall piece. So, do those $8 million over Phase 1 and Phase 2 include an assumption of being able to remedy the seawall issue?
These numbers did not include the seawall, so if the seawall does get included, that it would probably increase the, the cost of the overall Riverwalk.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peschall?
I think my question might actually be for Mr. Husser, Mr. Dumkey, so. It actually relates to how much the project could change. Like, you made that proposal back to us in, in August, and I'm just wondering, one, I think, the process, if it does, if we get into the development of it, everything needs to be approved, right by the plan commission and by the council.
Absolutely.
So, but I, I guess I'm interested in, in hearing from, from you, like, what you, how much could the plan change from what you originally proposed?
I would, I would say that the actual Marina portion of it wouldn't change real significantly, and if it did change from what we showed you, it'd, it'd change in a positive, in a positive direction as far as, it'd be more incremental value than what we're showing on the Marina, I'm real confident in how that's going to spin out. The actual island itself, there's a lot of complexity there. We've, we've had calls just this last week of people interested in it because it's in the opportunity zone and potential TIF. And, I mean, my desire is for it to not be into, you know, a whole bunch of residential components, it'd be more for something that's, you know, gets people to come to Oshkosh from greater distances, but, I mean, if the right, if the right offer showed up, I think it'd behoove all of us to say, we'll just let the whole island go, or maybe two-thirds of the island go, and we'd keep one-third to be a part of the Marina. So, I truly can't answer that. I would say that we're supposed to close at the end of October, and as soon as that happens, then the clock, you know, the clock is burning as far as interest and carry and whatnot. And so, if nobody steps up soon to, to take the island, then we would go for the plan that we have.
Okay. So, so you're really kind of thinking in a, in a two-to-three-month window, that we're going to really have what, the direction of which the island and the development's going to go, go towards? Is it going to be any...
I wouldn't say it'd be done by then, but I would say the probability of what's going to happen is going to, you know, be real high.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on 19-537? Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you. This one's actually for Ellers, and you know what, I'm drawing a blank on your name at the moment, and I can't believe I forgot it.
Todd.
Thank you very much, Todd. This is a unique one for us, in the fact that we don't really have a, we've, we've been asked for a compressed timeframe, the, the application process and all those things, as well as just the, the end result isn't fully known yet. I think Mr. Dumkey can, I think that, I think he can attest to that. And, at least in this situation, that it's kind of, it might be a positive thing, that the end result isn't necessarily known at the moment. From your side, basically, we pay you to help protect the city and to make sure that our interests and the citizens' interests are, are well-handled. Are any concerns in terms of the ambiguity or the vagueness of some of these things that we just... that we just don't know exactly what number we're going to end on? Any concerns on that front that, that you've seen in your years that, that you can share with us?
No, because again, you're, by creating the tax increment district, all you're doing is creating the tax capture mechanism to enable projects. You still have various decisions ahead of you in terms of a development agreement and any of the development approvals required. So, that's really the point in time where you need to analyze the specific deal on the table and take appropriate protections, you know, pay as you go, you had mentioned. And, and that's a key one in terms of incentivizing the developer so that the city's not bringing that money to the table upfront. So, at this stage of the game, as was mentioned, what we're really trying to do is create as broad of a plan as possible so when everything falls into place and it is known what's going to happen, it will fit within this. And then we look to the development agreement for those specific protections.
Thank you.
So, Todd, I guess, going back to the development assumptions. So, again, I, I'm not sure if I got this fully answered. And, and maybe you can't fully answer it because the 12-5 for, projected for 2020 through 2023 says the estimation, estimate evaluation based on full development scenario. So, full development scenario would be a further assumption that the rest of the island would be attractive enough to pursue other developments. So, I guess I'm a little confused as to how we're arriving at this assumption when we know that that's not an immediate two to three months.
And again, what we wanted to do is take a look at, you know, the physical geography. And it is just a, strictly an estimate. If you had a, you know, the highest and best use type development of the land denser than what's being proposed, what realistically could you just physically fit on that footprint in terms of valuation and discussions at the staff level? You know, we determined 50 million seemed like it was a reasonable number. So, again, we wanted to start at the far end of what we thought was, you know, at the edge of what could be accomplished, understanding that the plan is going to then be scalable. So, if 50 million isn't achieved, it's necessarily going to reduce the amount of incentives that can be paid. It's going to reduce the amount of public infrastructure that can be supported at least by the tax increments. So, it was strictly a planning figure.
What does full development scenario mean to you in this situation?
It would be, again, a highest and best use situation, nondescript in terms of what that means in terms of particular uses.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. May please take the roll.
Peschall?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curate 6.
Right next is Resolution 19538, a pre amendment to 2019 budget for TIP 38 pioneer redevelopment. Mr. Davis, do you want to describe what that 25,000 goes for in this situation?
Yes. The city, when we created our budget last year, did not have a TIP 38. And to engage any outside assistance from, say, Mr. Taves from Ellers or any other attorneys or other financial consultants, we'd have to pay them for that. And while we receive application fees, we actually have to put it in the budget where we can actually pay them so that the accountants and finance and munis all work together. So, that's why this, we need to create this budget amendment for TIP 38 that didn't exist in our existing budget.
And I'm sorry, did you say that was an eligible project cost for this?
It is an eligible project cost, but if-
And eligible.
And eligible cost.
And.
Yes. And eligible cost. But just so you know, we do collect the fees from the applicant to pay the initial cost. So, the city doesn't even have to front the money on these eligible costs.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, we have motion, second, we have discussion. So, let's call the roll.
Peschall?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curate 6.
Next is council discussion, direction of city manager, future agenda items. First, we have the Oshkosh Area School District and Common Council meeting, joint meeting. That is October 15th at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Councilmember Peschall.
I think at the last council meeting, we decided that we wanted to continue our conversation about transportation as an agenda item for that.
I have, that's right now the only thing I have on the agenda.
That was my next question, is what were our other? We might be able to take a whole hour on that.
You very well could.
Likely.
There might be some other things that we might talk about, some collaborations. I think the school district, police department have been having some discussions on some things that, that between now and then may come out, and we may want to talk about those a little bit. But that's really all I have right now. So, if there's anything else, certainly, please pass me along. We have one more council meeting between now and October 15th.
All right. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a reminder that that tentatively is one of the dates that I'm traveling. I'm trying to make some arrangements, but just a reminder that I may not be here. And Mr. Herman did connect with me about potentially the closed session. And obviously, if I have to be gone, I'll communicate with you.
So, since you're the representative for transit, would you just follow up with us?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, then. The next item, Deputy Mayor Herman has requested closed session immediately following that joint meeting with the school district on October 15th.
That's, that's correct, Mayor. Looking at our calendars for the rest of the year and knowing that we will probably cancel our second meeting in, in December because it's Christmas Eve. So, we'll, won't have that meeting. I thought it would be a good time to just bring the council together and have a big discussion in the process that I'm moving forward with the evaluation of city manager. And so, I would hope that council can, as many council members can make that closed session. I don't believe it'll last very long, just to kind of put some parameters together and going forward. So, I'd like to have it wrapped up so that the budget implications, if there are any, will be in our budget or close to it and planned for it so that there's no, no big amendments or things we would have to do to finish it up. Then I'll probably, at that time, we'll discuss future closed sessions that, you know, how many more do you think we need and where we go from there.
Okay. Do you expect anything from individual council members leading up to that date?
It's typical, we go to, you mean, future dates? No, I haven't really.
No, no, no. I mean, leading up to that date.
Just, you know, no. Just bring any ideas that you're thinking about.
Mr. Herman gave me homework.
I gave him some homework already. And I had a brief discussion with Mr. Fitzpatrick today on some other issues. So, I'll just, if you have any ideas or suggestions, that would be what the meeting's about too. So, if you have any, what you're thinking would be appropriate, you know, moving forward. No, that's a closed session, sir.
Thanks for asking. That's a good question. Future vaping ordinances. Councilmember Crowsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of give a little background, the current events around the country with the vaping. Today, we had the ninth death, confirmed death related to vaping. There's been nearly 600 documented health-related issues. Hospital stays, our largest retail store, Walmart, is banning all vaping products. The product isn't regulated. And I just kind of wanted to get council's ideas of where we could possibly go with this issue and see how far we'd want to take it as counsel to make the city a safer community for anybody that innocently thinks vaping is a thing to do instead of cigarettes, which it's been proven it isn't.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess my question to you, Mr. Crowsey, are you looking at, we passed an ordinance already dealing with vaping in the school, schools. Are you looking at an ordinance to ban vaping in the city of Oshkosh? Is that what you're pursuing?
Some communities are looking at that already. I was just kind of thinking, like legally wise, what could we do? Our largest retailer's banning it. It's shown that it's not a safe practice.
Yeah. So, I guess the question is, that would be the only thing we can do. So, I guess-
Yeah. I just don't know if we can-
Bring it forward.
Yeah. I just don't know if we can do that as a city. Obviously, there's businesses in the community that would suffer. But I think ethically, they would want what's best for the community as well. So, I would be interested in having a ban on sales and abuse, but that's just my own personal opinion.
Other input, councilmembers? Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't necessarily have too much input. I think, is it worthy of discussion? Yes. Is it worthy of more information? Absolutely. I'm wondering, since you did bring up some of your own questions in terms of legal, you know, is this something where the city, city attorney can just provide some legal framework for, you know, what are we allowed to do within the confines of our authority? And then, you know, a sample, maybe this is something for Mr. Crowsey, but, you know, a sample resolution or sample ordinance as to what other communities have done.
What kind of timeline would you be looking for that? Because as you probably recall, I am very, very, very shorthanded right in the moment.
I'm not putting any timelines on it. I'm just asking if that's something that, if, you know, if he's asking legal ramifications, that's something that we should know about.
Perhaps what I can do, because, you know, the city attorney is short-staffed, we can do some research with the league and see what some other municipalities might be doing. You know, it always, whenever you're doing an ordinance, you got to make sure that it's going to pass legal muster and certainly be acceptable to council as a policy decision. So, I'd be happy to do a little research and give you an idea because it, it sounds like the big question is, what scope do you want? How broad do you want it? Or, you know, do you say no sales or no smoking, no vaping? I mean, that's, that's a wide range. And how far do you want to go? What's your, what's your collective comfort level on that? So, I'd be happy to do some research with the, with the league and see what else. And then at least give you something to, to think about from a scope standpoint.
I'm perfectly fine taking the time and doing your due diligence with it. I mean, I don't want to overstep any bounds that we have as a council.
Well, I appreciate Councilmember Crowsey bringing this forward as, you know, we consider matters related to health, welfare, and safety of the general public. Certainly can appreciate where we're at staff-wise. But it, it would appear that the League of Wisconsin municipalities may be able to offer us because there are a number of other ordinances and resolutions out there.
And I could certainly check with my professional group and, and see if, you know, amongst my city manager colleagues, perhaps they've done something as well. So, we'll do a little fishing. We don't necessarily need to get into the, the legal issues yet. I don't want the city attorney to be kicking me under the table. And she's been very kind so far, but we, we can get some staff to work on that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since Councilmember Miller is unable to be with us this evening, he's traveling on business. Council okay with moving the premier resort tax discussion item to the next agenda?
Yep.
All right. And next, Councilmember Peschall would like to talk about discussion on regulation of conversion therapy.
Sure. And I, I want to acknowledge the role that Chief Smith would have in this as well because it would be his office that's, that would be regulating such a thing if we were to provide a resolution that would pass the council on this. So, really what I, what I wanted to do is I wanted to initiate a discussion that's been going on, not just in Oshkosh, but I think in roughly nine other communities across the state of Wisconsin about a form of, of, it's a, it's a form of therapy that is targeted at converting or conversion of one's preference of sexuality or gender to heterosexuality. So, someone who is LGBT or questioning that, going through a therapeutical process that allows them to, pushes them to question that reality. So, and by far, you can tell by my explanation that I am not a, a professional in that, in that description of that. But I, I believe it's important to discuss because it's a practice that, that many are, are coming to find out leads to higher amounts of suicide and depression and mental health and mental, mental illness issues within those persons that have gone through that process. So, so just, just kind of put it out there, the communities that have, that have done this, there's two communities in the state of Wisconsin that have banned this practice as it relates towards minors, towards children. Those communities are Eau Claire and Superior, Wisconsin. No, hold on. So, and then there's several other communities in Wisconsin that have determined that this practice is banned and should be banned and is in, and is banned currently as, as it is. And that's Milwaukee, Madison, Cudahy, Shorewood, Racine, and Sheboygan. That's what I could find recently in, in just a quick study. So, there's one school board in the state of Wisconsin that says that their healthcare or healthcare providers cannot engage in this activity as well. And that's Eau Claire School Board, meaning that they won't offer any health insurance with a company that offers, that will, that will cover this type of practice. So, my, the most recent community to pass a ban on conversion therapy is, is Sheboygan. And I believe it was, it was, I believe it was a 7-2 vote, if I remember correctly. So, most of these are unanimous or one or two votes. All of these have passed with a, with a, with a strong majority for banning conversion therapy. So, my, 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 my goal for you, for all of you tonight is to kind of guide our process in wanting to do maybe a workshop, workshop, workshop on this. Essentially, let me, let me back up, is essentially find out where this fits within our, our practices of where we're going right now. A couple of weeks ago, or a month, a month or so ago, we had a workshop that related around whether we should create some type of diversity committee at all or anything. And I wonder if this is something that would fit within that or if this is something that we are comfortable moving forward without such a structure. Just wanting to, to gain your insight on this. Now, mind you, I'm not expecting you guys to be knowledgeable and understanding of what this is. I don't think that's what tonight is, is about. But it's about discussing a practice that many feel is taking place in our community, but is very hard to determine whether it is taking place in our community because it's many times protected by confidentiality and HIPAA laws. Many times, it's practiced within a church or religious community, which there's no level of strong outward communication about that practice. So, it, it truly is a, a hard thing for us to put our eyes on. But I, I think our, our ears, if we were to open up our community to have a discussion about this, that we would find a lot, find out a little bit more from persons who have been in this position. So, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, thanks for bringing that forward, Councilmember Peschall. I know Mr. Crowsey would like to speak to this, but I just want to say that there have been, I've received two email requests in the past year regarding this. And as I understand it, the only aspect of it that, that we can really act on is as it relates to business that charges for the service. That's the only-
Yep.
-that I understand. And then, whether or not it's enforceable, so that's the other challenge. I'm glad that we had a community member who felt comfortable enough and actually very brave to come and speak to this issue a couple of months ago. And there have been follow-up discussions with that individual as well as these other two emails that were received in the past year. And, and so, as I understand it, again, the only aspect of it that- And, and so, as I understand it, again, the only aspect of it that we can really have an impact on is whether or not there is a business allowed to operate that charges for that service. So, that's what I have. Councilmember Crowsey.
Thank you. Mr. Paschal's suggestion of having a workshop, I think, would be very, very, a very good idea. I think if we get some educators in here to talk to us and to really explain the whole ins and outs of the conversion therapy ban and what it means to the community, I think it's hard enough, growing up as a teenager or a young child in this community around the whole country, and I think this adds a whole nother dynamic to the issue of trying to convert these people that are struggling off who they are already, and to be told who they should be. So, I'd fully support getting some more input from some community members that might want to speak on this, maybe during a workshop, and some educators.
So, Mr. Crowsey, do I understand correctly, you're agreeing with Councilmember Paschal about having a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission do a workshop, or are you saying you want council to do a workshop?
I think we should reach out to some educators and get somebody in here to speak to us about it, and what the whole idea is, and so we can be educated on a vote if it comes to that.
Other discussion on regulation of conversion therapy? Councilmember Paschal.
Sure. So, if we were to go about doing a workshop about this, is that something that we'd ask staff to put together and, and find the time to do that? Just, is this, has this now become a council-driven workshop in that, in that relation, or looking for some guidance?
From staff's standpoint, I would need some guidance in terms of who I would approach on something of this nature, so that it would, wanting to know the scope of what you'd want, you want, you know, there are certainly legal aspects, which I think, I think Chief Smith, Attorney Lawrence, and I had done some, had shared some information with you in terms of how we thought something would be like this. There are legal implications, but if you want to, if you want to know about legal implications versus the, the topic itself, to be more educated on the topic, we, we couldn't provide you any assistance on that. We would need some, some outside assistance. So, if that's what you'd want to do, we could, you know, give us some time to go identify somebody like that. If anybody knows some suggestions, we could do it, but I'd certainly want to know the council wants to have the workshop. I'm hearing a couple, but I want to make sure that I have full direction on that, because when you're doing a council workshop, usually it's from a council directive, such as this evening with the fire study. That was a goal that the council had set for me. So, if you want a workshop, just give me some parameters and give me some time to put it together.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. Mayor Paul Mary, where, where are we on the Diversity Issues Committee? Where, like, what direction are we, are we in that?
So, actually, city manager and myself were just discussing that today.
Today.
We are expecting to put that on the agenda after budget is finalized for discussion and potential creation of that commission.
Okay. I, I guess my, my suggestion is that, my feeling is that I, I think it would be comfortable to move this into that, under the parameters of that committee. Provides some initial work when the committee gets started to do and to work off of. And I, I can't disagree with you, Mr. Roloff, when you say that it's, it's hard to, to find the right, the professionals in the world to come and, to come and do this, and it'll take us a little time to do that. So, my-
Can I just ask you a clarifying question? So, just out of curiosity, with those other communities that have put that in place, is there any information back on, I believe the goal is like twofold. One is to protect children from harm, and then the second is for more inclusive communities. So, I guess my question is, is any of these other communities, do you have any information on what they've seen as a result of instituting that?
I have not.
Okay.
So, some of them, a lot of these are very recent, within, within the last year, two years, and so, and when I was looking at those communities, I wasn't necessarily looking for the, the impact of those, of that legislation. So, but it's, it's definitely a good thing to look further into.
And I guess I just feel that this goes beyond what a council could really enter, seriously give thought to in a workshop, that perhaps, you know, a more focused group might be, might do this more justice. That's, that's my thought. I don't know. Councilmember Crowsey?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with either one. I mean, I think if we have a committee talk about it and really come up with the meat of the issue for us, so we can really bring it forward and have it be a worthwhile agenda item. I think the more work that goes into it, the better.
Does that give you any more clear direction?
Well, perhaps, what, I think where you were going, Madam Mayor, is, you know, we could perhaps look at that as being one of the first goals of a new committee.
One of the elements.
But we were talking about putting it on after the budget was adopted, so that'd be in November. If that's acceptable to council, we could, we could do that.
And, and certainly, one of the other, I guess, delays, if you will, of having that topic come forward for that commission is, there are a number of people in the community who would like and are putting together pieces that they would like to see that commission do, rather than us create it or just copy in other communities, so that it is more community-driven, and perhaps the folks that this would serve may have an interest in, you know, putting specifics into it as well.
Sounds good.
All right. So, next, we have Indigenous Peoples' Day. Councilmember Crowsey?
Thank you.
Sounds like we might have had similar conversations this week.
Yeah, a couple of us, right? Thank you. I just wanted to bring forward the idea and suggestion of what other cities in some of the states around the country are doing Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's to replace Columbus Day, which is the second Monday of every October. I gave City Manager Roloff a copy of the Marathon County ordinance just this past. It basically observes the, the history of what this area really was about from the beginning, and I just really have a hard time after researching and reading a little more about what Christopher Columbus did and who he was, actually, why it ever became a holiday in the first place or observance. It happened in the 1930s, when it started to be observed in this country. Basically, he was a slave trader. He reported back to his country that the people that were there from the beginning were peaceful people, thousands of them, and they could be taken over by 50 people if an organized group would come in. I don't really like the idea of the whole thing, the settlers. The settlers are people that just took land from people that were originally there. How would we like that if it happened today? So, I just, I really have a hard time supporting an idea of celebrating Christopher Columbus, and I was just wondering if any council members would be in support of replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I'll just speak to a phone call message that I received last week from the leader of a 4-H group at North High School. They were working with a focus as to culture and Indigenous Peoples', and had requested that council consider acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I, if I understood the message right, because we've been playing phone tag for a week, the request was kind of in addition to, and that was, like I said, we're playing phone tag, but it sounded like something that that group, that 4-H group, might be interested in pursuing language, either through proclamation or, and/or resolution. So, hopefully, we'll be able to connect and see what it is exactly that they would like to include or have council consider. Councilmember Crowsey?
I just had one other quick tidbit that I didn't know. Christopher Columbus never even set foot in the United States. He got to the Bahamas, and that's as far as he got, and it's, it's a United States observed holiday, so I just kind of found that kind of funny that he never even came to this country and we celebrate him.
So, are you asking for proclamation or a resolution, or both?
I would look at it as changing the observed holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I don't know what we would need out of that.
Please ask, yeah, ask your question here.
City manager, I believe we don't observe Columbus Day here.
We do not observe, recognize Columbus Day. It's not on our list of holidays, so just as a point of clarification.
So, then probably a proclamation, then I would assume, right?
Shall we put that to the 4-H group to make a recommendation?
Sure. We can add that to the group, yeah.
And I'd be happy to send the copy that Councilmember Crowsey provided me with from Marathon County as a point of reference, perhaps, because I know the mayor talked about wanting the 4-H group to do this as an exercise for them, and I, because I had discussed, well, we can find something for you, and she was-
If I understood the request correctly, that would be, I believe, what they're asking for, but like I said, we need to follow up on that one. So, and since that's coming up October 12th, it would give them a short period of time, but I don't know how focused the group is to, you know, have that on our agenda by the 8th, which would put us, what, at October 4th?
Proclamations are generally easier, just from a functional standpoint. If I got them Thursday afternoon-
Sure.
-we'd be okay.
Okay.
And actually, second thought, I mean, a lot of times, you get the proclamation, Madam Mayor, when you walk in the door on Tuesday, so-
That's true.
If they could do it, we could make a decision by Friday whether to put it on the agenda or not, but-
All right.
But we can do that if you like.
Councilmember Paschal?
So, a couple of things. What stops us as a council from doing a proclamation? I mean, we don't, we don't really have, we don't have to have a group come in and say they would like to do it. I, you know, I don't see why we, as a council, just can, is there, is there a, is there a process for that, that we need to follow?
That's the other-
Were you, were you snooping in on her once?
The city attorney had brought up the fact that we do not have currently a policy on proclamations, and so, we have typically honored those requests in the past, because we don't have a policy by which to decide which ones come through or which ones don't.
And I have gathered some information for you on that, so when, next time we have a chance to sit down, run through that with them.
So, a council member or council could state that they want to do a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day at, at the next council meeting?
Yes, that can happen.
I, I think that that's, that's, that's a good message to send out to the community if we, I don't, we don't need to, we don't, we can't make a decision on that. We can't take a vote on that right now, but can we get a consensus about whether council wants to have a proclamation about Indigenous Peoples' Day? Can we do that?
I just wanted to honor the teaching experience that it sounded like was being requested.
Sure.
So, I certainly will share with the council members the contact information with that individual leader, so that you can maybe form your opinion based on what their wishes are.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, just as a point of reference, because that question about proclamations has come up recently, it's very general in the municipal code, section 2-11, Duties of the Mayor. It says to issue all proclamations, but there's no policy per se on the scope of that, and obviously, you know, if, if there was something getting proclaimed that somebody had some disagreement with, right now, the mayor issues proclamations, just not trying to give the mayor just carte blanche, but at the same time, I think you were genuinely concerned about it as well.
I had one more, but I'll use-
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, no.
Oh, okay. No, I was just going to say, to Mr. Roloff's point, you know, certainly, the mayor has the capacity in order to do the proclamations. I would say, you know, if this is something to move forward on, typically, you know, we obviously present the proclamation to someone. I would just be, you know, incredibly thoughtful as to who the recipient would be.
Okay. Councilmember Paschal, did you have something else?
I had one more. Is it, Mr. Roloff? Do municipalities or larger cities, towns, villages, do they routinely not recognize Columbus Day as part of its calendar?
In recent years, I don't want to say any holiday is lesser or greater. I think the federal government still recognizes it, but very few municipalities recognize Columbus Day anymore, and I think it's just a matter of, there's a limit as to how many days. If somebody, if the council wanted to give the employees a holiday, I think they'd be very happy.
Sure.
And they would probably say, you can call it whatever you want if it's a day off. But the reality is, this is more than just a symbolic action on, on behalf of council. So, you know, that you have to be very thoughtful in what you do, and that's your, that's your job. But to answer your question, very few municipalities, to my recollection, still recognize Columbus Day.
Okay.
Councilmember Crowsey?
I think the proclamation would be the appropriate way to go then, and along with Ms. Elson Osby, I agree that we should put our thoughts greatly into who we pick to give this to. I look at it as a, a learning opportunity to teach people about the true history of our country and our land, so I look at it like that. Thank you.
All right, so how does this sound? Let's just close this out by saying, this is a thoughtful discussion. If for some reason that group does not want to go through that process of creating the proclamation, then we will draft one and thoughtfully consider who we could invite to receive that in the absence of that group putting it together. How's that?
Sounds good to me.
All right? Okay. So, next is a second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right. And no further council member announcements, so city manager, it's on you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't have a lot. There's the status of outstanding issues in the agenda package, the things I would point out. The Public Safety Staffing Studies are now done, but the, the next thing will be done there is the, the facility study is the next phase in that process, and as you saw or heard this evening, we're working with FGM, the group that did the city hall study, to take a look at that for fire purposes. And then, the next one on the agenda will probably be the, just update on Oshkosh Corp. Still looking at a fall opening, and we'll be looking for details about that.
Do we have a general date yet for that?
Around November 1st, but it won't be a publicly noticed meeting, so the invitations will probably be limited. It's a private event, so I would say no more than, I would guess no more than two of you will be invited. Nothing personal, don't take offense to it, it's just, it's a private event, and I'm guessing that'll be the case. And then, we've got the Oshkosh Corporation update in there, to answer that question, and then a series of contracts. We're doing very well on site plan reviews, and as a result, some of the work that we farm out, in this case, to Brown and Caldwell, has increased. It's just a volume of work. That's actually good news. That says there's more development going on, and we're, we're happy with that, but we did have to execute an agreement, and it's recoverable through our plan review fees. And then, just getting ready for 2020 capital improvements, our two geotechnical reviews that are done, one by ECS Midwest, you may refer, you may have heard them in the past as River Valley Testing, so it's just a new name on that one, and AECom for the other one. So, that's what we're planning to do for 2020, and that's, unless there are any questions, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, next, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Herman for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to section 19.85, parent 1, parent G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to Confer with Legal Counsel Who Will Render Advice Concerning Strategy to Be Adopted With Respect to Litigation In Which the City Is or Is Likely to Become Involved Related to Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc., and/or Properly Located at 1212 South Main Street in the City of Oshkosh. properly located at 1212 South Main Street in the city of Oshkosh.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Paschal.
Aye.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curie Six.
And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.